Presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year since the beginning of our STEM program, we've had customary update at the end of the year. We have STEM Director Dan Riley here tonight to talk about the STEAM program at the middle school, early college development at the high school, and the newly acquired skills grant for both the high school and Hildrith.
Thank you for the invitation to be here tonight. So we're going to go through a few things, ask any questions you want as we go along. So looking at the evolution of our early college components of our program, starting with STEM at the high school. So we have evolved our offerings to have pathways, as we would declare these four to be, specified in certain areas of industry. As you know, our STEM program is complemented by a work-based learning experience that runs parallel with that. And so it helps students make a conscious decision along the way, like Susan, on some of the fields that they might be interested in pursuing, making them more passionate, giving them the self-efficacy that we're looking to help them develop along the way. So we have computer science, biotechnology, healthcare, engineering, all of these experiences now going into their second full year for this 12-college-credit program for the students in these pathways. So we continue to evolve those to give them a step in the right direction with respect to their college readiness, as well as their career readiness. In addition to those four pathways that I just shared with you, we have been working very hard with our program of studies to map out and overlay for a full-blown associate's degree experience for students coming out of Marlboro High School. And so the first of those pathways is in computer systems engineering technology, which is long and fancy for IT. But essentially what we're trying to do is we're trying to change the face of what it means to graduate from high school and want to go directly to work. We're selecting viable industry sectors that have real pathways to the middle class or higher for our students, and we're backwards designing a trajectory for them along the way that helps them get the right degree and the right credentials to go to work at 18, 19 years old into a real thriving industry sector here in Marlboro. So IT being one of those, we're also working on a second pathway in advanced manufacturing. The way that this program works, and we're going to be piloting during this upcoming year, is that students spend about half the day on campus at MHS with us, and then they transition to the QCC campus. It's fully funded under YCC. We provide all the materials. We also provide the transportation. We have a plan for providing the transportation for students who can't transport themselves to the QCC campus. So we're really working to be innovative in these ways and to give students the opportunity to complete a full associate's degree upon completion of their graduation from MHS. I'll just point out, too, that the courses in blue are some more courses that we've been able to vet and get the QCC folks to approve us to deliver at MHS's campus. So that would be our faculty members delivering those college courses for credit. In orange, those are the more in-depth, what we call CTE, or Career and Technical Education courses, that would take place on the campus of QCC. Students would essentially take two courses on QCC's campus per semester and kind of rotate days. So they'd have one class that meets Mondays and Wednesdays, one class that meets Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then during semester two, they'd take two more classes. They do that over a two-year time period, and they get a great experience in the IT sector in different facets of it. You see classes that are linked to security, you see hardware, you see networking. These are all different sectors of the IT market that students might become passionate about and they can pursue for job opportunities. We'll now take it back one step, and we'll talk about middle school STEAM for a second. And so we've been able to get teachers on board with conducting those interdisciplinary experiences that we talked about at length last year, really bringing the curriculum to life in additional content areas, whereas prior to this, we were kind of heavily focused in engineering. And so some of the experiences that I just took a quick minute to document from this past year, you can see things still continuing to happen in engineering. You have the Egypt Project that I watched the seventh graders present in the auditorium on a couple months back. We also had the Sustainable Housing Project in grade eight, and that's an integration of all the content areas. In addition, you have the animated postcard happening in instructional technology, and that's pretty much what we formerly used to call computers. But since we've adopted the new state frameworks for digital literacy, we've really ramped up the relevancy of what's happening, the relevance of what's happening in those courses: computer science, data analysis, digital citizenship. And so pairing those teachers with the core area teachers helps them to bring the content to life. And you can see here something that Brian Daniels spoke about during his last presentation and update on STEAM. As opposed to your typical brochure project that would take place in your instructional technology class, what the students did was they kind of used their science curriculum, and they created a brochure of the circulatory system. Again, just another exciting way to kind of bring the curriculum to life and combine the different content areas. Visual arts. We are so fortunate that the PTO at Whitcomb donated a 3D printer to our visual arts STEAM program, and so we have that installed. The teachers are now able to incorporate it into their visual arts lessons, again, bringing that engineering theme to life through design in our visual arts curriculum. So what are we overall trying to accomplish with all these different adventures at the various levels and the things that we're trying to promote for students? You know, this is my mixing bowl of the things that really matter in terms of preparing students for the 21st century. We used to spend a lot of time right here in the high-level curriculum framework area, really focused on individual content areas. Since then, we've been able to build in more interdisciplinary learning through planning time for teachers, through teaming, concepts like that. We've been able to integrate that parallel work-based learning tracks when we talk about career readiness, small learning communities for better personalization at all levels, and early college opportunities to address the college readiness piece. Now I'm going to shift gears one more time and talk to you about a recent award that we received. There's some sort of nonspecific language on this slide on purpose. The official announcement comes June 2nd, and we've been asked to be as nonspecific as possible until then, so. So we may be the only comprehensive school district in the state to receive one of these awards. Total amount may be right around $240,000.
Maybe.
The money may be used to enhance our robotics and our advanced manufacturing offerings. Like I had said, we're looking at new certification programs in both of those areas for students upon graduation from MHS: automated systems, PLCs, simulation software. We've also included in that proposal a plan for the Hildrith Building. So looking at trying to build this idea of work-based learning in our alternative high school, we would be, you know, one of the first school districts to embrace that concept. And I think, again, in IT and advanced manufacturing, we have really some leverage now to move in that direction. And again, aligning that with the associate's degree programs that we have is extremely important. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Ms. Matthews.
Dan, thank you very much for this because it brings us full circle, continuation of everything. On the early college pathways, which I have to say my child obviously has taken advantage of, and the additional classes that Marlboro will be able to offer, will that be, even though those are pathways, will they be available to more students even if they're not in those pathways?
Yeah, the way we kind of set the budget for that, we have a budget basis from YCC for how much enrollment we can offer, how many tuition, how many students we can fund for their tuition expenses. And so that's about 100 students per year.
Oh, okay.
What we've done is through the guidance department, and thank you Sharon for all the work that your team has done in this area, is we have opened it up beyond the students that are solely pursuing a pathway. Because having a college experience prior to graduation can be a real benefit to any student, even if they're not on a specific pathway. So while priority goes to a student that's willing to declare themselves as part of a pathway, we certainly want to fill that enrollment schedule that we've built over the next couple of years. So yes, absolutely, we're trying to get as many students to sign up as we can.
Terrific, thank you.
And we do have a number of students that are randomly taking courses right now at the high school, not specifically placed in pathways.
No, I knew that with the existing ones, I wasn't sure.
With the additional ones, yeah.
With the additional ones.
Yeah, absolutely.
And congratulations on the not-so-specific grant.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley, I'm wondering if you would tell us a little bit about what happened yesterday? You know, the mayor was there welcoming some folks, other members of our team. You had some visitors?
Yes, we did. We had 16 different school districts that came to see our STEM early college program, learn more about the innovative programming that we're offering. There's this sort of push right now that's really coming from the labor market in creating an opportunity for more students to be prepared to access higher skilled jobs, you know, viable pathways to the middle class. And nationally, we have this epidemic going on where poverty is increasing and the middle class is decreasing. And so what I often do when I host guests is I will quantify that for them because that's why they're coming to see us. They're on the sort of the fringe of experiencing these hardships as well with their own students. And when we look at the graduation data for the state of Massachusetts, and we see that, you know, out of 75,000 students coming out of our high schools within six years, only a third of them completing a certificate, or an associate's degree, or a bachelor's degree, you know, that's a real cause for concern because the job market for those viable middle-class incomes and higher is about 80 percent, the demand for having one of those three things to even get in the door for an interview. So there's a big gap, and we're trying to close that gap. And because we're that kind of model, now that the state is sending our way a bunch of school districts to learn from us so that they too can close that sort of middle-class gap that's being created right now. So we're very fortunate. We had 16 different school districts yesterday, and we've hosted, I would say, over 75 school districts over the last few years alone, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Dan.
Presentation two is the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. This was taken this fall by our students in grades six to eight and high school nine to 12, focusing on substance use, violence, bullying, mental health, sexual activity, and physical activity. You have at your place the booklet with the key indicators. We do have the initial data, and Dr. Mark Kerbel is here to talk about it, and Mr. Bertoni is on the way.
Thank you. And yes, Will had a family matter at home.
Okay.
So my thoughts are with him and his family. And Dan had already mentioned Sharon Buckley, Director of Guidance, so if I start talking nonsense, she can come in and take over. You know, I love following Dan. I love watching Dan. I want to be like Dan. I'd love to bring home a grant for $250,000. That would really be great. I want to talk about the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. And so I have my notes in front of me, so I'm not going to look at any screens, but if you see me looking away, it's because my font size here is too small. So there were 40,000 students that participated in this survey, 26 districts. Our students, grades six through 12, participated. And so the results are from 2006, so it's easy to look at comparison. I like to look at, when I look at data, I look at what jumps out, and some numbers are startling. Even if numbers do decrease, they still jump out at us, so we should be aware of that. I think there's good news. Oh, I see, I have to, sorry. Dan, what do I do, this one? Wait a minute, let me figure this out. There we go.
There you go.
So I want to talk about the Whitcomb School first, and then I'll talk about the high school. When we talk about the high school, that includes the Hildrith. At the middle school, I think there's some very good news, and that in all substance use areas, which is cigarettes, alcohol, inhalants, there was a decrease in usage, except binge drinking. And binge drinking is the last 30 days, but that was just an uptick of only a 0.5 percent. So I would say it's about the same. That's really good. Bullying, victimization decreased, but that's still around 30 percent. So we may, we celebrate, yeah, it's going down, however, 30 percent's still high. And in fact, all the stats we look at, we celebrate when things tend to trend the way we want them to trend, but we have to take a look and see if we are still concerned about any particular area. Physical fighting, for example, has increased. Physical fighting for a lifetime is around 37 percent. That's high for students in grades, in this case, seven and eight. But fighting on school property has increased, and carrying a weapon has increased, but on school, on school property, that's around 1 to 2 percent. So not too concerned about weapons on property. We have a middle school with 1,300 students, and we have, you know, three administrators and a principal. If you take a look at all the activity that goes on in a middle school, one of the things we could be thinking about at some point, do we need a dean, or do we need someone to specifically to work with kids? I'm just putting it out there on the parking lot paper that's over by the window. In terms of physical activity, there was an increase, and obese numbers have increased as well. General patents, female are higher than boys in areas of smoking, alcohol use, marijuana, and bullying, victimization. Males are higher in the area of physically fighting and carrying a weapon. Cyberbullying, by the way, dropped from 21 percent to 18 percent. I was surprised at this, I don't show it, but you have it, you have the stats, that in terms of mental health, there was a decrease in life stress. So when we look at the middle school, if you think about our new VOT, VOT materials that we're going to buy with our new opioid grant, that should really help. If we look at stats from 2006, it tends to be a decrease in all areas. I mean, that's great. So at the high school, so we have substance use decrease in all categories: cigarettes, alcohol, marijuana, prescription drug use, drug misuse. Violence decreased from 2008 every year. Bullying decreased. Mental health issues decreased. Sexual behavior decreased. And one of the things I want to talk about in terms of sexual behavior, you can look at the, you can look at the same numbers I have. So one of the things you say to yourself, one, are students participating in sexual behavior? Yes, they are. Secondly, do they use protection to help them? Not as much as we would like. And so therefore, one of the things we need to put on the parking lot is, do students have access to protection? And if not, where do they get that? And should they get that at the nurse's office? And the answer is yes. My feeling, anyway. I'm not representing the superintendent, by the way, but I am, well, I understand, when I talk to Will, Will and I are in agreement, okay, with what our students need. General patents, females higher than males in being a bully victim, cyberbullying, and the five mental health categories. Males are higher in all nine substance use categories, violence, sexual behaviors, physical activity, and body weight. So one of the things you should look at, but you have the same thing I have, take a look right down on the right-hand side in 2016, what jumps out at you? Lifetime alcohol use, 46 percent. That jumps out. But that's down from 62 percent in 2008. So there's a trend that's going down with anything else that jumps out. If I look at females and males, if I look at mental health, life, very stressful for the past 30 days, 39 percent said yes. Okay, so that's something to think about, and maybe at some point, you can have a Director of Guidance talk about mental health and mental health support for our students. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Matthews.
Thank you for the information. Yes, obviously, the pregnancy number jumped out. One of the things I've talked about before, and we've talked about the wellness curriculum, but are we giving those topics at the right ages? Is it too late rather than too early? And I know, you know, there's some parents that fear that conversation, but where is, when do they need the information? And I think we need to all talk about that more.
We need to talk about that more. We don't have a health program in fourth grade. We're going to introduce the VOT in grades four.
Right.
And Will's already having a discussion with the elementary principals.
Right.
He's on top of ordering all the materials and having those kind of conversations. It's never too early. It is always awkward. For parents, it's always awkward.
As well as administration.
Less so awkward, less so awkward for our teachers, who do a great job.
Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? Any other questions? Where's the balance of the survey, the overall totals for the 40,000?
The overall totals for the 40,000?
You said 40,000 took the survey.
Forty-five, 40,000 students in 28 districts.
Right. So where's the, where do you see the totals for that? I mean, I'm looking to say, you know, how is our school comparing to the others at that age group?
We compare very well, except certain, well, I think it's on the paper, too. It's in the area of sexual behavior. But we favor very well compared to other districts in all the categories I talked about today.
Okay.
I want to give you one last, one last comment, but I'll ask you more of a quiz.
I'm doing the quiz.
You were at the National Honor Society last night, so you're good.
I was invited. I was invited, National Honor Society, on the stage, but I wasn't given a.
That will be rectified soon.
I was not.
That will soon be rectified, Mr. Mayor.
Here's the question. The number-one cause of stress to students: A, school-related issues such as grades, academics, classroom performance; B, home-related issues such as finances, getting a long divorce; C, after-school-related issues such as lack of access to sports and clubs and being alone; all of the above. The number-one cause of stress?
D, all of them.
D? No, I set you up with that, that's why I put D in. No, no, believe it or not, it's A, school-related issues: grades, academics, classroom performance.
Mike, that's all.
Thank you.
Mike.
So I can answer the question. If you go on the Metro West Health Foundation website, all of the information is there for everyone who took the test.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. Workshop on 21st Century Education on May 11th, Principal Charlie Collieri, Director of Guidance Sharon Buckley, and I attended a workshop on 21st Century Education at the Education Cooperative in Walpole. This was an interactive workshop hosted by Natick Superintendent Peter Sancioni, and it featured Ken Kay of Ed Leader 21. He walked us through an exercise called Profile of a Graduate to make us aware of the skills that our students will need in the 21st century. It was a wonderful exercise. We're actually going to be using this with our leadership team to come up with the knowledge, skills, and competencies that need to be addressed at certain age spans. And you can see the graphic, this is what Charlie and Sharon and I came up with out of a list of certain competencies that really need to be addressed, not just content mastery in the core areas, but how to put it all together. PD survey results. The Joint Professional Development Committee crafted a survey to obtain feedback on effective PD for staff. You do have some pie charts in the information that was handed out to you. An amazing 451 staff members took part in this survey. Kudos to Mary Murphy for spearheading this. So a couple of the things that jumped out at me on the pie charts, and we will be using this to design our PD for the next year, big hitters: technology, classroom management, and curriculum and content. It is interesting to note, however, that while cultural diversity shared a major portion of the pie as a priority for the district, it was significantly smaller for department and self. So quite a fascinating display of, well, the district needs to do better with cultural proficiency. I don't need to, nor do my team leaders or my team, my team folks. So we will use this again, as I said, moving forward. Also, in your handout section is my end-of-cycle summative. And included in this as well is a result of a survey that was administered to the leadership team based on the principles of Lead Like a Pirate. Last year was Teach Like a Pirate. We now have Lead Like a Pirate that we've been looking at. And evaluation tools, the evaluation tool now calls for a component of student feedback for teachers and staff. And I wanted to model this and make sure that everyone has this at their disposal and they can look at it. The questions are not mine. They came directly from the Lead Like a Pirate chapters. I did want to show you a couple of things in that survey. It's in the handouts again, right behind my end-of-cycle. And the end-of-cycle looks long. Please don't think it's that long. Those are, it's a cumulative document. It's my goals for the year, which, by the way, I started as an interim, so the goals are, could have been perhaps loftier. I added to them a bit as we went along and I became the superintendent. What you see there is a cumulative document that has the mid-cycle and then the end-of-cycle. So if you want to concentrate on the end, that is what you should do. But the survey was given to 15 members of my team. By the time Patty collated it, I had 14, and then, of course, after we collated, there was one more, so that was not included here. Question one, the superintendent is understanding and is completely and totally into the mission of MPS, was my high-water mark, with strongly agree nine and agree na, five. And the area that we need to work most on and that I need to lead better is question five. The mission and objectives are clear, and everyone understands, can explain the why of everything, seem to be the lowest. We are actually embarking on that, digging deep into what are our core missions and objectives of Marlboro Public Schools, and rebranding with the leadership team as we speak. So I wanted to give you that as a survey. The welcome video, I'm going to hold on for a second. We actually have someone with us. I'm going to wait till the end of my report. In your packet, you should have the spring issue of Panther Pride, and this is the latest copy this year. It really is the culmination of efforts of Communications Coordinator Reina Rago, who has created a new look for this. We feel that it's a little bit more interesting, rather than having each principal at the beginning of the year set up goals and then at the end of the year sort of reiterate. Rather, Reina has done some more human interest stories, spotlights. Too bad Catherine isn't here. There's a spotlight on her field hockey player. Spotlights on staff, spotlights on some students who are doing very interesting things. So we hope you enjoy the read. The link is also on the website, was tweeted out, and is on Facebook. I think we've covered all the media. Also included in your information and handouts is a most recent letter from NEASC with respect to the status of Whitcomb. This is great news. There will be a two-year, I'm sorry, they approved or they reviewed at their April Board meeting the two-year progress report. Many, many areas were commended, including the professional development opportunities offered to the staff, the structure of the PLCs in the new schedule, full implementation of the evaluation instrument, integration of STEAM across the grade spans, and the use of one-to-one technology. So what is left on this decennial cycle is a special progress. So what is left on this decennial cycle is a special progress report due February two thousand and eighteen. There are only three highlighted areas. That is the smallest amount of highlighted areas I've ever seen at this point in time. And then a five-year progress report is due in September of two thousand nineteen, at which point all of the recommendations need to be addressed. So Whitcomb will continue to work on this report, our progress towards this report. And finally, there is an opportunity for leaders in our district building on our conversation that we've had over the year with respect to increasing the leadership capacity in the district. And we have Dr. Stacy Sesizul coming tomorrow from UMass Lowell to talk about the doctorate program that they have, which is a action-based, researched program that we think would be very helpful for our staff members and a rich opportunity for them. And Dr. Kerbel put out some interest, and so far, there are ten people who will be gathering and we're hoping to, to fund through our reimbursement program, you know, some of them who will move forward into this doctoral program. I'm sure that all ten will not, but to get them thinking about it and entering when it's most appropriate for them in their career. Before I take a look at this video, I wanted to congratulate all of the National Honor Society members last night, including Susan, those who received their final cord, those who received their second cord, those who received their first cord, and those who will soon receive a cord in a surprise ceremony. June first, there is an upcoming event that we hope you attend, Faculty Awards at Marlboro High School. You'll recall this used to be in the morning. It is now in the evening, so we request your presence there. It's always a nice time to reward and recognize our underclassmen. And of course, June ninth is grad, sorry, June eleventh is graduation. June ninth is the graduation walk. Back again, last year, we started the graduation walk a little bit late when we finally saw it on viral, going viral on Facebook and so on, so we only did the walk to Whitcomb. This year, we're adding buses for seniors to go from Whitcomb to their respective elementary schools. This will all take place between quarter to eleven to around noon on that Friday, the ninth, after graduation rehearsal. So you're welcome to come. We won't see each other again, but it was great. Many of us were at the door of Whitcomb cheering them on, and the kids loved it, the students loved it, and it just became a wonderful opportunity to wear the gown again, right? It's always good to wear that again, and to celebrate and let your teachers see your success as well as younger students in the crowd. So we have with us Jill Morin, who's an EL teacher at the high school, and we're hoping to queue up here. I know you've been looking at this, Mr. Gibbs, but she has created a series of welcome videos, and these welcome videos are in Spanish and Portuguese. And she created a mashup that we were hoping to show you tonight, but I'll send you the link. So I would invite Jill to talk about this project, how it was funded, and we'll show them a bit of the English version, if you'd be so kind.
The other, okay, no problem.
Yep.
Okay, so I was working with our EL coordinators, brainstorming maybe a year or two ago about how we can really welcome our, our new families as they are registering at the Welcome Center, the Registration Center, and knowing that we have a diverse community. And if we can do some of these presentations in their language, in Spanish and Portuguese, why not? We have, I was able to get two of our graduates to volunteer to do the Spanish and the Portuguese, and they were really, really excited about doing that. They just couldn't wait to give back to our community. But also, I did it in English with subtitles that can be easily copied and pasted and translated into any language that, that families speak. So we also were thinking about, as parents are coming here from a different culture or maybe just from a different town or a different state, what are some things that they, that they just wouldn't know? General rules and policies. I featured things as simple as, you know, what's, what's the rules for distributing medication? I can't tell you how many times I've seen kids pull out little, oh, you need, you have cramps, here, take some Midol. I'm like, no! And it's just different, and they just might not know those policies. And for parents to know, too. So instead of giving them a handbook, I thought it would be really great to reach this generation in the way that we get a lot of our news. I'm just as guilty as anyone else for just streaming through and saying, oh, that looks interesting, and watching a four-minute video. And so I decided to do that with this registration thing. So families will be able to register their child, watch a seven-minute video, and it even covers when you drop off your child or pick up your child, please make sure you follow the signs around the school, little things like that that, that are important along with really, you know, much deeper issues. At the end of each of these videos, in English, Spanish, and Portuguese, there's kind of a heart message. I talk about how I transferred to Marlboro in the middle of my sophomore year and some great advice that I was given, and each of my other former students share a little bit, just like, hey, you can do it, and don't be afraid, we want to support you, which is directed both towards the families and towards the kids who will be watching this. And we've already thought about, Reina and I have thought about different ways to kind of share this video. And besides this, you know, we're working on a bunch of other ways to kind of show off what Marlboro is already doing. We just do so much, and it's, I think it'd be really great to continue to just feature that in a way that works for people. And a lot of times, it's just short little videos that we can share on Facebook and on YouTube and all of that. So that's kind of what I did.
I'll just show about three or four minutes of this, so you get the flavor of it.
I might have to right-click. That's what I'm doing. Got it. Worked before. Okay.
Well, you have the link, Mr. Gibbs. I'm not sure what happened here, but it's okay. It's not connecting for some reason. You have the link. You can watch it on your own. It's a fantastic video. Thank you, Jill, for all of your work that you've done. Appreciate it.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions? Oh, yeah.
Is, will the video be on our website?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it already on the website?
I think we're, we're showing it to you guys first, and then we'll be sharing it online.
Thank you. Thank you.
It'll be on YouTube as well once we.
Thank you very much. You're all set. You're all set?
I'm all set. Yep.
Minutes of the meeting from April twenty.
No, my cuss is.
Oh, Finance and Operations Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, just have a couple of updates. First, the food service account balances were stable from last month. The total negative accounts as of the time of this were twenty-two hundred ninety-two dollars. I just checked recently, it's only about twenty-three oh-five, so we're actually staying pretty consistent there. Breakfast charging is a majority of the debt, and I'll get back to that in my third bulleted item. Online payments are attached. We have accepted over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in funds from the online payment service that's starting, continues to grow, and we love the system. It's working great. The third bullet I'd like to talk about was Kevin Dawson came from, he works for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in their lunch program that they oversee all of the schools. Came to Marlboro to meet with Superintendent Grulick, myself, and our food service manager and our district manager from Aramark to talk about the community eligibility provision. I'm going to stumble over that, and from now on, I'm just going to call it CEP because it's, it's a mouthful. So CEP is a lunch and breakfast program that basically, once your district hits a certain percentage of students who are free and reduced, you can apply to this program to have the entire district get free lunch. So there would be no cost to any of the students of the entire district, and the district would get reimbursement based upon the number of meals you serve. So we would no longer collect free and reduced paperwork. Every single student would just go through the lunch program, and we would get a reimbursement per child for every meal we serve. So since this is a rather large change, Kevin gave us some information I'm reviewing. I'm working with Aramark, and I plan to do a pretty extensive study of this over the next couple of months and then bring it back to the committee in the fall with my findings and a recommendation, if I have one. There, there's pros and cons to this, and the pros that I've already seen, they're numerous in some ways, that every child could just go right to the cafeteria and get lunch without ever having to worry about paying for it. It would reduce our collections. We would no longer have collections, since that wouldn't exist. It would reduce the administrative burden of having the free and reduced paperwork. It would also reduce our burden of collecting, modifying, and then auditing those same paperwork. The cons is that you don't get the full reimbursement for every single meal. It's based on a sliding scale. So the more students you get, the more money you get, closer to the full federal limit. So we're in that ground where we just became eligible for this. So there really is a big financial decision to make. The second con for me is that this is tied to federal funding. And as I'll say in my fourth bullet, we got an update from Jeff Wilson, the Associate Commissioner, on some of those things. So being tied into a program that relies on federal funding could be year to year as, as we go on. So obviously, it needs a lot more study. It's very interesting, and I don't have anything to give you right now as far as a highlights or recommendations, but I will be studying this pretty extensively. And I think, in fact, I'll probably even ask the superintendent if it could be one of my goals, because this is going to be a pretty large, large study to do. The fourth, I was, I thanked the committee and the superintendent for allowing me to go to Masbo, our annual institute for professional development. I took courses on Edward Analytics, changes to the end-of-year financial reporting, the new SA requirements for federal grants, food service, collective bargaining, outsourcing of support functions, and special education updates in terms of the business office. In addition to that, we also had an opportunity to have the Sandy Hook Elementary Superintendent, Principal, parent, and state police officer who was in charge of the investigation host a special general session for all business officials. So that was very powerful. In addition, we had Associate Commissioner Jeff Wilson come to us and start talking about the state budget and the federal budgets and what he is starting to see due to the lack of tax receipts, that they're starting to get worried that there, there could be some potential cuts next year. I don't want to belabor this because I don't have firm numbers on any of this. All this is, is the fact that most of the groups who watch over the state finances are kind of raising the alarm to say, on the collection of income tax and sales tax. It's not, it's plateaued in some ways, and we need to start thinking strategically about what's coming from the state in the future. From the federal government side, from what I've read, which has not passed yet, the Title II grant might be eliminated completely next year, so we would be fine. That wouldn't cause any panic for us. What I'm more worried about is any changes to Title I and IDEA where most of our federal money is. So I'm watching this like a hawk, and the more information I get, I'll share with you. It's very early, but I, I think at this point, I'm starting to get a little worried about next year having a potential nine-C cut. And for us, that would be a circuit breaker cut that we would have to watch for. So I wish I had better news, but unfortunately, it is what it is, and that's, that's what I got this, at this conference. Not sure if anybody has any questions I can answer at this time.
Questions from the committee?
I, I have a question about the lunch, the DESI lunch program. Is, it's a fairly new program, right?
It's been out for a couple of years. They, when the state trends, you remember, I think it was about two years ago, I started talking about economically disadvantaged.
Yeah.
And that's what they were moving to from the free and reduce statistics. When they moved to that, what they're really talking about is students who get services through the state, whether it be Mass Health, SNAP, TANF, any of those types of programs. When they moved to that, that's when the state also started to adopt these federal programs for CEP. And, and that's what we know it as today. So part of the, the first key is if you can get to about forty percent of your students being economically disadvantaged under that qualifier, that's when you start to become eligible for the reimbursements.
And so after a couple of years, there's data from other districts that have been qualified already.
Yes.
So I presume in your research, that's part of what you're going to look at, is how they adjusted to it and what the pros and cons that they found.
Yep. For some of them, it's a no-brainer because they're sixty to seventy percent economically disadvantaged, so they get the full federal amount per child, which is three dollars and twelve cents, actually more than we charge for most of our meals. So that's a no-brainer. That, that really makes it easy. For us, it would be a little bit different, and that's, we would get a little bit less than that. So I want to make sure that when I present to the committee, we understand all of the financial ramifications of the program. Because in effect, we would be giving up local sales. We would not have any local sales, other than catering and snacks.
Would it be free breakfast also?
Yep. It'd be free, I'm sorry, it would be free breakfast and lunch.
And lunch.
For all students.
For everyone. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Special education report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few updates for this evening, just to give you a heads up. The Massachusetts mid-cycle review that we have from the state came back, and we came back as fully implemented, which was good news. It's important to note that when they come in for the mid-cycle review, they only look at the areas that were marked prior, and it's a very minimal review. They just come in, they look at some files, and they look at a few areas that were marked. For example, some of our, one of our school buildings where they had to look at how the classroom was structured. So when they do come back next time, it will be a much more thorough review. And as I've noted before, there are some still pieces that we're working on that I feel might get marked in the next coordinated program review, especially with the spacing issues that we have and knowing that a lot of buildings are being creative right now in how they're providing services to students. I also want to update you that there's going to be changes in the CPR cycle in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. It's going to be all rolled into one, civil rights is going to be rolled into one process with the special education process. There's been no updates at this time. What's happening specifically with EL, we have asked and haven't gotten a specific answer, so that's still more details to come on that. The, how the CPR will occur will be based on the school's accountability status. So right now, they're going by, and if you look at, there's a, I gave a, kind of like a triangle that they provided in the packet from a training that I went. So they're going to be basing it off the, the level system, so level one, two, three, four, and five. Level three, four, and five districts are going to have a much more in-depth review and also more hands-on from DESI and DSAC as they go through this process, and it's going to be a three-year cycle, not a six-year. So they're thinking of it as a continuous, ongoing circle going around and around. So that's definitely going to have an impact if Marlboro continues to be a level-three district. They're going to be looking as far as when they, they're also changing the accountability status, so that's going to impact it, too, what that looks like when that comes down the pike. It's important to note that as they go through this process, they're also going to be looking at risk factors a little more as they go through and determine the accountability status. So they're going to be looking at the subgroup data and percentages, the disproportionality data, data, the program quality assurance, complaints, involvement. That means how many complaints have, we have, we have received from the state, and then any previous noncompliance that we may have had. So for levels three and five districts, they'll just be much more in-depth oversight. The other thing, too, is they're changing their name. It's going to be the public school monitoring instead of the other, it's just another new name for us to go by. So another thing that's going to be really important as part of this process is they're going to be really looking at districts for multi-tiered systems of support. Multi-tiered systems of support is not a special education foundation, it's a district foundation. So the district, I recommend that the district continues to build that foundation and continue to ensure that we have a strong tier-one core and strong tier-two, tier-three interventions for all students at all levels moving forward, because that's going to be the big push for all districts that's coming out of DESI right now through the new coordinated program review, even though it's not a special education foundation, it's general ed. They did bring that up in the training, and there was some discussion around that. We have created an EL and special education task force to work together to kind of look at how we can support students, students who may be struggling, who may require some additional interventions within the tiered systems of support, and/or students who may need to be screened or assessed for disabilities and students with disabilities who are EL or FLE students. The goal of the group is to begin to look at the areas of strength and opportunity and to strengthen the collaboration in the district. Right now, the areas that we're looking at are tiered interventions, appropriate assessment and screening tools, current SST process, and collaboration of all departments. Right now, we're focusing on what we can do for next year, and there's going to be, there's a team will continue the work after I leave, and the goal is they're going to have a day this summer where they could also continue the work. It's a group of EL and special education staff, and also, there's also some general education representation on the group and also Director of Guidance. I gave you some quick updates from the Whitcomb's Pathways Program. We've had some visitors lately that, we had Kimberly Bookman, who's a reporter on the Seven News Team, read to the students in the Pathways Program at the Whitcomb Middle School on May second, and that was with Brian Ziman, who's actually here this evening. on May 18th. So, if you click the link that's there or Google Chronicle Beyond the Cure and you will find it. They did a whole story on her and hers, she was a pediatric cancer survivor, so they've done a story on her. And so, there's a, two adults that they've followed. So, you can watch that also on Chronicle. So, we've updated the special education program names that's gonna be moving forward. We've had, this has been discussed over the years. This is coming, coinciding with the team chairs working together collaboratively on their goal, their professional practice goal, to really create a, kind of like a program guide to the programs in the district, to really identify what they are, the, how we, and the, the tools that are used within the programs and more in-depth than we've currently had. So, if you look down the name, you'll see that Pathways, we did rename a couple of years ago and it's remaining as Pathways. The Generic Resource Room, otherwise known as GRR, is gonna be called the Learning Center. The Language-Based Resource Room, LBRR, was gonna be the Language Enrichment Center. The Adaptive Resource Room is gonna be called Connections. The Therapeutic Learning Center is gonna be called Therapeutic Academic Program, TAP. Essentials, including Whitcom Middle School, Marlboro High School, Essentials A, B, and C, is just gonna be called the Learning Center. So, there's going to be no Essentials A, B, and C and the high school's working on that now. Academic for Therapeutic Teaching Act is gonna be, remain as Academic Center for Therapeutic Teaching Act. And this will all coincide in the manual that they're creating.
Any questions from the committee?
Why don't you ask, you just ask me? Ask her if it's on the website.
Do we, have these visits been put on the website or Facebook at all?
Which ones? Yes. Raina has posted, there's, if you look on the website, you'll see pictures of Kimberly Bookman. There's a whole series of that and she can, she's still here, she could probably tell you where to find that. And I'm not sure about the Chronicle. That just came in and...
That wasn't really appropriate. I mean, I think it's fine for us to say that, but it really focuses on the disease part and really shows kids interacting. So, all of the... Public, public, public...
No. I agree.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Minutes of April 25th, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Minutes of May 9th, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. Seeing none. Recommendation of appointment for Director of Student Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A search committee of nine people was formed to interview candidates for the July 1 vacancy for the Director of Student Services. School Committee Member Michelle Bodenheadinger was on this search committee. This netted four finalists who were interviewed, I'm sorry, four, four candidates were interviewed after a paper screen. Two were brought forth as finalists. Executive Directors Mary Murphy, Mike Bergeron, and I interviewed the two. And I am delighted to bring Jody O'Brien to the meeting this evening with the recommendation to appoint her to this position, as it is an appointment of the school committee and obviously pending successful contract negotiations. The resume of Jody is in the packet. I'd like to say a few things about her. She has varying levels of experience in the field of special education. Her last 17 years were spent in one district. 17 years in one district. That resonated with us as commitment. And 10 as Administrator of Special Education in Dudley-Charlton. She knows special education and regulations well, but what was most impressive to us as well, unanimously, we, we felt that she would be an ideal team player to move forward with us. Glowing references from those that we checked, I spoke with two folks, Patty Brown spoke with two as well, because our question was, why are you leaving after 17 years and after 10 years as an administrator? And she said she is, has done all she could do in the district and the superintendent echoed that when I spoke with him. He said she is ready to fly and we are delighted that she has flown here. So, I'd like to introduce Jody O'Brien to you.
Thank you. I am honored and very excited to be here tonight. Actually, it's 21 years.
Twenty-one, okay.
I started off as a special ed teacher at Shepherd Hills, 7 through 12, back in 95. So, it's been a really long, long time there. I loved the district, but I, I'm a very proficient and excellent administrator and I'm really looking to be able to grow as a leader. And after meeting with Mary, Mike, and Maureen on, on that Friday for an hour and a half, I, after leaving there, I was so super excited about the possibility of being here and being part of the Marlboro family and working with you as a team. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? You are lucky, Mrs. Hennessy, isn't it?
Thank you. Yeah.
I know she's washing and she could be calling any minute.
That, that's a good sign, because in school communities, you never know.
So true.
Oh, boy.
No, thank you very much. Very happy to have you, so, thank you very much.
Do you have to take an official vote?
I, I think we do have to vote.
I think so.
Is it a...
We're gonna vote pending the contract negotiation?
Yes.
Yes.
So, motion...
Go ahead.
Motion to, to accept the recommendation of the appointment of the Director of Student Services.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Recommendation for appointment of Superintendent of Teacher in Learning, Teaching and Learning.
Yes. On February 28th, as you recall, the school committee voted to approve the top line of the proposed organizational chart, has since approved the rest of that. But at that point in time, in February, the position of Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning was created, combining the mouthful, the Executive Director of Primary and Elementary Education with the Executive Director of Secondary Education. So, I am recommending that you appoint Mary Murphy, oh, I see, I don't have a capital M on that, to this position, as it is again, the appointment of the school committee.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment.
Pending...
Come up and tell us a little bit about yourself. Any further discussion?
Congratulations, Mary.
Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries.
Welcome to Marlboro, Mary.
Welcome to Marlboro.
Appointment of Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Likewise, on February 28th, the top line of the proposed organizational chart was voted on as approved by this committee, creating the position of Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. It is my recommendation to appoint Michael Bergeron to this position, as it is again, the appointment of the school committee pending successful contract negotiations.
Motion to approve the appointment of the Director of, Director of Finance and Operations. Assistant Superintendent, sorry.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
I was looking, I was looking at the wrong line, sorry.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries.
Yay.
Thank you very much.
You didn't ask if Mike wanted to tell us anything about himself?
No, I don't wanna hear it.
He doesn't want anybody to know about Mike. It's our secret.
Class of 2017 Chromebooks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we first talked about rolling out the Chromebook initiative, one of the discussion points that we had was, what are we gonna do with the Chromebooks when they no longer have value or they, they don't really benefit the system anymore? And what I'm recommending to the school committee is that we surplus the first generation of Chromebooks to the leaving 12th grade students. There is 149 Dell 11 Chromebooks, as well as 32 HP 11 Chromebooks. We did check to see if there were any value in the Chromebooks and what we got back from the dealers is that they would take them and scrap, but they wouldn't give us any money for them. Because there's no, there's no resale value of them. They're, they're really at $0. So, what I'm asking the committee for tonight is permission first to take a vote to allow me to give these to the outgoing seniors to continue with their academic career.
Motion to approve the donation to the seniors.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in...
We have discussion.
I just have a question. Will this vote come up again next year? Because it will determine how new those computers are.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we're setting precedent that it would be a given that they'd be getting them every year.
There, it's gonna depend on how many, because if you notice, the 149 and 32 doesn't equal the class. If some students have lost their Chromebook or they've been damaged, they haven't been replaced, we're gonna try every year to be able to surplus enough, as much as we can, to give outgoing seniors some, some of these items, because there's really nothing else we can do with them.
But we don't wanna make it a given.
We don't wanna make it a given. That's why every year, I'm gonna be bringing this forward.
The numbers will change. Right. And those who just came on board more recently, we're taking them, re-imaging them, giving them to new students, recycling. These are the only, only the ones that have been around for, since 10th grade.
Three years.
And to that point, it's, the student doesn't have to accept it either, right? I mean, it'll be an option whether they, and then it could go to another one, as you said, it's not the full class, so.
Right. Okay.
All set? All those in favor, pose carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Acceptance of donations and gifts. Middlesex District Attorney, MHS Senior Post-Prom Party, $500.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion made and seconded to accept the gift. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Tracker Systems, Camperino, installation of new sign at MHS, $10,000.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion made and seconded to accept with gratitude. Been a long time.
Yeah. It's coming.
Thank you.
We just had a meeting today, actually, also with Whitcom, so that the signs will be somewhat in sync and we're, we're working with that as well. But this should be installed by graduation, we're hoping. Ooh.
Motion...
This year's graduation.
Mr. Galoney knows about this, right?
Yeah.
Yes. He does. Yes, he does.
Motion to accept the $10,000 gift from Tracker Systems. All those in favor, pose carries. Lancaster Gardens Whitcom Courtyard Beautification Project by Students, $40.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Reports of subcommittees. Any reports of subcommittees? No. Members' forum. Members' forum. Mr. Matthews.
I've signed the warrant. Nobody's spoken up and Mike and I will review it afterwards, but no questions.
Thank you very much. Any other members? Scott Hinder.
So, also in your handouts tonight, you'll find a hard copy of the Summit of Evaluation Report for the Superintendent. It is now in your hands. You have two weeks to get it back to me.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm looking at everybody. And then I'll do all the collation and, and be ready to report out at the last meeting.
Would you like my office to send an electronic copy to the two members who are missing with, with that note?
In fact, it would be nice if you could send it to everyone electronically, because I know some members are more...
Perfect. I will do that.
Doing it online.
Done.
Terrific. Thank you.
Any other members? Any other members? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn to executive session, where we will dismiss from executive session.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session for the purpose of...
Oh, yeah. We have that...
Before we go in, can we...
Oh, you have something?
No, it just occurs to me that this is the last meeting before graduation. So, just wanna congratulate...
Congratulations to graduate.
Yes.
And all the graduate, because, yeah, our next meeting is the 13th.
Oh, I'll read it. I'll read it for you. Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of convening for the, discussing contract negotiations with non-Unit Employees Director of Student Services, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.